Good morning.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners, July 21st. This month is getting away from us. July 21st session and start with the roll call. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Here.
Chairman Booker?
Here. Join with me as we do the Pledge of Allegiance and before we do that, Mr. Grady, our county attorney, will lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Creator, we thank thee for the grace you provide us this day. Give us your wisdom so our minds will reflect your thoughts. Give us your righteousness so our motivations will reflect your heart. Empower us so our actions will reflect your will on earth. Give a special blessing to our families whose love and support strengthen us to faithfully represent our people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome you all here today. We have some guests from leadership Craven. Ladies, welcome. And would you please stand and give your name and your organization, please?
My name is Kelly Hawke. I'm a Career Development Coordinator with High School, Craven County School. Also, I'm a Career Development Coordinator at West Craven Hospital. Lauren Prescott, Career Development Coordinator at New Bern Park.
Thank you. Welcome. If you all would remember, if you have not done so, please silence your phones so that we don't have an interruption to the meeting. Commissioners, you've got in front of you the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections?
The agenda as planned.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as planned. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Number one item on the agenda is funding the New Bern area MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization. And Mr. Hodges, you are going to lead off there.
You're all aboard. I'm being joined by Deanna Treble, the New Bern area MPO Administrator. What item we're bringing for you today is with the de-urbanization of the area that happened with the 2020 census. Two of the grant, MPO is funded primarily by two grants, but one of those grants will go away. We're good for the current fiscal year, but we have to start planning for the next fiscal year. Deanna, working with myself, with Kelly at CARTS and our state and federal partners, have identified that there is 5307 funding that can be utilized for supporting MPO functions. And Deanna's going to give a short presentation about how this will work. We are the direct recipient, Craven County is on behalf of CARTS, the direct recipient of those 5307 funds. So it is going to require a memorandum of agreement between us and the city of New Bern for the sharing of those funds. But Deanna's got a short presentation just to kind of talk about the history of the MPO and kind of where we are right now with this process.
Thank you, Jean. So, good morning, everybody. Thank you so much.
Put that mic toward you, if you would, please. There you go.
Good morning and thank you for having us. So as Jean mentioned, I'm just going to kind of go a brief overview of kind of where we're at. So the MPO is responsible for planning for all modes of transportation. And as Jean mentioned, that Craven County is a recipient of Section 5307 and that provides public transportation options. The P, sorry, the MPO is funded primarily by two grants and that historically has been PL 104, which we get directly from the state of North Carolina, and Section 5303 funding, which is also for transit planning. And as a result of the 2020 census, as you know, our area got de-urbanized, which means that Section 5303 is going away, which has required us to look at an alternative funding source. And so in beginning, as Jean mentioned, this is going away, 5303 is going away as of this year, so we're looking for a funding source for next fiscal year. So in talking with CARTS, CARTS has been obligated just over $2.9 million for public transit. And in speaking with our FTA partners, that money is available for use until it's gone. The federal government really doesn't want it back. And that allows an opportunity for us to spend all of their money. And so in talking with CARTS, they have operations money that they can encumber by fiscal year. So every year that we're looking at and through it lapses, that it's through FY '29, so they have about four years of funding that they would need historically. It's about $500,000 of federal money that we've been asking for, so they need about $2 million in order to continue operations through the end of fiscal year '29. That leaves an available balance for the MPO to take advantage of for planning purposes. The difference between the operations and planning, FTA determines planning as a capital expense, so that allows us to encumber funds for more than just one fiscal year. Our plan is to encumber as much money as possible to get us through, hopefully, eight fiscal years. And that would allow us to hopefully get a funding source to bridge the gap until we have the next census and hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll become urbanized again. So as a result, what we're asking for is, you know, there is available funding through Craven County being a direct recipient of 5307 and that the MPO could be a sub-recipient of those funds. The MOU that has been drafted establishes the roles and responsibilities and communication and coordination between the MPO, the city, and Craven County. The only difference between this is 5303 funding requires a 10% match and with 5307 money, it requires a 20% match. The 5303 funding is currently paid 80% federal government, 10% by the state, and 10% by our local, our member agencies. With 5307 money, there are, there is no 10% match from the state, which means all 20% of that local match will be split per, pro-rata share based on population as established in the MOU for establishing the MPO. So our goal is to hopefully execute an agreement by October of this year that would allow us to apply for the grant in January for FY '27. So I just wanted to kind of give a representation of showing the changes. So the middle column is the Section 5303 funding based on the current year's budget. And as you can see, that's a 10% cost share. The column on the right is the 20% with 5307. So if we were going to put the same budget together for next fiscal year, you can see it's literally just a 10% match. So for Craven County, it would go from $1,300 and change to $2,600 and change. Implying that with our, all of our grants, you can see again, the difference between Craven County is just that 10% increase.
So we're just in front of the board today and we're available to answer any questions that you may have, is, you know, accept the information, approve the memorandum of agreement between Craven County and the city of New Bern, and authorize the county manager to execute all of those agreements. To kind of put all this in summation, this will not have any impact on CARTS operations or on their funding. This is actually funding that they will be unable to utilize, so it keeps this 5307 money from the federal government back into this local community in order to keep this very important planning operation up and running for the citizens here.
Thank you. Board, are there questions for either of the folks that just spoke to us?
Mr. Chairman?
I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement. Not going to say it in county.
Got a motion and a second? Any other comments or questions? I just have one, Deanna, it's just for the public that might be watching this. Can you give a two-minute overview on exactly what the MPO does?
Of course. Thank you so much for asking. So the MPO is a regional transportation agency. And so for the New Bern area, we look at not just the city of New Bern, but the larger area. So our urbanized area as defined by the census includes Trent Woods, Riverbend, the city of New Bern, Bridgeton, and portions of Craven County. And so our job is to look at growth for all modes of transportation, so we identify where growth is happening. And then how do we, how do we plan for that, either for new roads, bridges, or maybe in the short term, if we have some safety issues, we work with NC DOT to identify some countermeasures. So that's kind of what we do as an MPO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There is a webinar by UNC School of Government on the 13th of August at 10:00, 10:00 to 11:15. I believe we're going to have a, utilize the conference room. Jack and I will be attending the webinar. I am the chair of our MPO and I invite the rest of the commissioners to attend. It is a good overview over how transportation planning works in the state of North Carolina and how that impacts us locally.
How it works or doesn't work?
It, well, it worked for some places.
I'm talking about now, at the state level.
Right.
Commissioner Mitchell, will you give that again, please?
13th of August, 10:00 to 11:15. We're going to use the conference room right behind us here. And it's a good overview of transportation planning.
Thank you for that. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there, anyone opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Deanna and Jean.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, number two, is the consent agenda. Consent agenda today includes the minutes of our July 7th session, tax releases and refunds, human resources request for personnel, resolution amendment, uniforms and dress policy, and human resources holiday schedule.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda? A second?
Second.
A second? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones? Chairman Booker?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes. Item number three is the departmental matter, starting with number one item is the airport. Welcome, Mr. Andy Shorter.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, everyone. Appreciate you having me here. This, as the agenda sheet says, it's approving a federal FAA grant. It's a BIL AIG grant, which is bipartisan infrastructure law, airport improvement grant. It's money that's been allocated to us through that process. And what we're talking about today is accepting the grant for 1.818298, so $1,818,298. And when I say it's allocated to us, our allocate, annual allocation on that has been about 1.3 million, but we have some unallocated money from FY '24. So this is a combination grant for the remaining FY '24 money and then also the FY '25 money. And what we intend to use the grant for is, if they're right, this is our airport layout plan you see on the screen. It's all, everything in color is all the projects we've done. We planned this back in the 2016, 2018 timeframe. But what we're talking about is the lower-left quadrant, the kind of reddish salmon-colored buildings down there, that's the area that we've recently cleared and determined or named it the aerospace development area. So what you see here is our latest, this is a picture of the area that's been, since been cleared. You can see it used to be all trees, but now it's about a 70-acre area here, 90 in total with the road leading in and the sewer leading in. That work's been completed and the clearing's been completed, but now we're getting ready to do what's in orange here, a new taxi lane and apron. And that's a $6.5 million project. So this particular grant will go right towards that money. So while the FAA is not interested in clearing and putting in roads and sewer, it is in their wheelhouse to do taxi lanes and aprons. So this is a good use of that money and that's what we intend to do with it. I think most of you have heard that we have leased out 55 acres of this and you can see this phase one, two, three, and four, those are all, well, approximately 15-acre plots, 12.5, 12.5, and then two 15-acre plots that will be developed in scheduled time periods. So the first phase, 18 months. So again, you can see this project here is a $6.5 million project to build that taxi lane and that apron into that area. So this $1.8 million will be a slice of that to get that moving. So the request is to have the board approve and the chair assign this grant, needs to be back to the FAA by the 25th of this month. Mr. Grady has the documents and has his portion of this as well.
Questions for Mr. Shorter?
I recommend that we approve this motion.
Second? Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or approve it? Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us?
Just real quickly, while I have some pictures on the screen, the other thing that we're still wrapping up at the terminal is the terminal expansion and improvement area. So this is the last area that we're working on. You notice this is the front of the terminal where you walk in, this is TSA screening, this is the hold area where you get on the aircraft. So this is really kind of behind the scenes to the public. This is the airline ticket offices. So what we've done, this terminal was built prior to 9/11 and then after 9/11, TSA came onboard and then they had this baggage screening. If people don't realize, every bag you have, not just the one you carry on the plane, gets x-rayed before it goes on the plane. So what we've done was we've rebuilt this area. This is the baggage screening machine, so now it's all one continuous, it's called inline screening, to where once the airline attendants put the bag on this belt, it doesn't have to be manhandled, so to speak, anywhere else in the process until it gets in the back and they load it up onto the baggage cart and take it to the airplane. So that's a nice upgrade. It's, you know, for health and safety and things of the TSA officers. And then also, sorry, we also get new airline ticket offices, again, behind the scenes, but it's a much better lay-down for them as well. And we still have room for three airlines, a little bit larger, not quite as large office. And then what we consider over here is a less-than-daily office, so for instance, Breeze doesn't actually need or want as much room as American has in the terminal. So as originally designed, this area was designed for three airlines, so we still have that, but it's all new, refreshed spaces, energy efficient, new lights, new HVAC and all those things. So this is the last phase of this project that we've been having going on. And once we get to September, it should be done in the fall time, but we've been working on that for three years and we're very pleased with how it's worked out. We get a lot of compliments on it and we think it's the way into the future for the terminal and for the service here in the area.
Could you give us, that's great, good news. How about the runway expansion thing with Williams Road? Could you elaborate on that?
Yes. Let me go back to this diagram here. So what we're talking about is off the end of the runway, Williams Road is currently this green area that runs straight through Scotts Creek right there. We just had earlier this month, a public information meeting of the NC DOT's done the NEPA planning for this. And we had some good public input, but no major concerns. Right now, that information is all with the, what I call the lettered agencies, whether it be federal or state agencies, looking it over. It'll be due back July 29th, and if there's no major comments, then it will be, go from draft to final, and then it'll be submitted to the FAA, looking for a finding of no significant impact is what we believe will happen. It's already, the DOT's done a good job of socializing it with all these agencies, so we don't think there's going to be any problems. So what that'll be, that'll give us the environmental approval to go ahead and move Williams Road from this location to this more curved location. And actually, the next FAA grant that I, hopefully will be here within the next month or so to have you accept, will be for the planning of that. So through the NEPA process, probably about 30% of the planning's been done, but of course we need to take it to 100%. And then that's the normal FAA process, one year do the environmental, next year do the design, and then we'll be looking for construction the year after that.
Great. And for the public's information, that will allow us to safely bring in larger aircraft, correct?
Yes, sir, it'll do that, but it'll also help the current aircraft that we have. Right now, our runway, as you can see here, is 6,453 feet. But due to the fact, and this is, gets a little specky aeronautical stuff, but there's not a full thousand feet off the end of the runway before you get to the first set of antennas required for the FAA. So that mathematically shortens the runway by 400 feet. So just by moving this road and moving that antenna, without putting another inch of asphalt, we get a 400-foot longer runway. And that's helpful, not only to maybe future aircraft, but also the current aircraft that we're using now in the hot summer days, they have to manage their weight and sometimes potentially take fewer passengers than they have seats for.
Very good.
And moving the road, are you going to have to move houses?
No, ma'am. All this property on this side of Williams Road is already owned by the county slash airport. There may be right up here at this little, what'll be the tie-in with the old road, they think possibly a tenth of an acre would need to be acquired, so very small piece, possibly.
One question?
Yes.
Assuming all the approvals come through and 100% of the process is completed, what is your ballpark figure in terms of starting construction on moving the road? I'm here in 2027?
Yes, ma'am. So if we go with this, what I laid out as FAA plan, and we normally don't get the FAA grants approved until August or September, so we'll get the design going and then next August and September, hopefully get the grant for the construction going, and realistically probably wouldn't start that construction until after the new year timeframe.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Item number four, Parks and Rec. Mark Seymour.
Commissioner, thank you for having me here today. Here today to talk about our partnership, Craven County's partnership with Harold Bate Grant through the years. For 25 years, the Harold Bate Foundation has been a strong advocate and partner in providing high-quality recreation opportunities to the citizens and visitors of Craven County. In June, Craven County was notified of an award of $33,000 grant. Of this amount, $13,000 reflects the annual support of the Bate Foundation to provide youth league opportunities. This amount was included in FY '25, '26 budget. The remaining $20,000 was granted to support safety and accessibility enhancements at Creekside and West Craven Parks. Craven County continues to experience a rise in youth sports participation across all parks, with baseball and softball remaining particularly popular. To enhance safety and spectator experience, two highly requested amenities in the addition of safety netting between fields, this reduces foul balls onto separate fields, and at Creekside and West Craven Park, as well as the purchase of several accessible picnic tables for those locations. This portion of the grant requires a $20,000 match from Craven County. Both the safety netting and picnic table additions are anticipated to be completed in the fall of 2025. The board has requested to accept the Bate Foundation grant and approve the related budget amendment of $40,000 to receive the grant and to provide matching funds for the safety and accessibility project.
Questions for Mr. Seymour? Got a motion? Second? Got a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes. Mark, I just make a comment, and that is that the Bate Foundation has indeed been great to our Parks and Rec program, correct?
Correct, yep. We're finishing up a couple of projects from the spring right now, so we're doing a bat and cage and a shelter, a picnic shelter out at the beach volleyball court, so.
That's been a real strong advocate of ours, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Item number five. Russell Lee Young, our tax administrator.
Morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me. I'm very proud and very excited to be here this morning to present to you on a couple of items. You have in your packet there that I'm here this morning in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 105, 373, that says at this time of year, I'm to present to you the settlement. So if you will follow along with me, I've got quite a bit of ground to cover. If you notice on the settlement here, a couple of things that are noteworthy I want to bring to your attention. Our net levy for tax year 2024 was $59,752,810.82. That is an increase from last year's, previous year, of $1,123,054.24, so approximately 1.1 million increase in our levy. Couple of other items to note on the settlement is we collected $59,269,444.1. That is an additional compared to the previous year of $1 million that we collected, $71,535.67. Want to speak just a second here on our collection rate. We have a collection rate as of June 30th for this year, for tax year 2024, of 99.19%. Now compared to last year, I reported to you as of June 30th, 99.26, seven hundredths of a tenth off. However, this morning, I would like to report to you that our collection rate this morning is 99.25. So we're still going strong, okay? And I do want to take this time for just a quick minute, that my tax collection manager, Cindy Glover, I did go to her probably a couple of years ago and I said, "I want our tax collection rate to always begin with a 99. What have we got to do to get there?" And she took that request and she has run with it, so I'm very, very proud of the work that she does and the staff of five in our tax collection division. I want to speak on something as well.
And she's sitting here today?
Yes. Cindy, if you'll stand for just a second, want to make sure all the commissioners recognize your hard work. And she has a staff, there are four others back at the office, but yeah, to collect $59 million is quite a task for this county, so I'm very proud to have her as part of the tax team.
Thanks, Cindy.
I do want to speak just a second here that may not, it may not say a whole lot to you, but it speaks volumes to me. And it's what I watch very closely as a leader of our division, our department, is the total number of releases, refunds, and write-offs. I'm reporting to you this year that that number is $156,045.17. Now, the reason I bring that to your attention, and I'm so proud to report this, is that is a reflection of me. That is an indicator to me as the department head is the quality of our work. You know, I report so much in quantity, but this speaks to the quality of our work. This says, are we getting it right the first time? Are we having to go back and release tax notices, refund tax notices? I'm proud to report to you this morning that since I've taken office or taken the role as tax administrator, that this is the least in amount that this number is. Now, I have a goal, we've not reached it yet, but I'm very proud to report that, that it is the lowest number since taking on this role. I'm proud of it because it speaks to the quality of our work. It speaks to the quality of our staff. It speaks to the quality of our appraisers in getting it right the first time. And I've thrown a lot at the staff on getting the training and recognizing and teaching discernment. So we'd like to recognize Chief Appraiser Justin Deese, Kayla Sawyer, our personal property manager, and they work very closely with Cindy. That is also reflected in the collection rate as well as to their work. So I brought my crew with me, I'm very proud of them, and I want you to be as well, okay?
Welcome to both of you and congratulations again for doing a great job.
So thank you to all three of you. Very proud to have you on the tax team. Chairman, at this time, I presented the settlement. Of course, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them at this time. If not, then I'm ready to move on and ask for the charge of the 2025 levy.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the settlement of the 2024 tax levy? A second? We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody opposed, so.
Very good.
Okay. Next item is the 2025 charge to the Craven County Tax Collector.
Yes, sir. At this time, I'm asking a charge for the 2025 collection of taxes. And I will note too, that I have scheduled and we are on track to mail the 2025 tax notices next Thursday, July 31st.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to move against the tax collector, charge the tax collector with the tax collection of the 2024 levy? Say move?
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one opposed, so that passes. And your third item then?
Yes, sir. Steve, at this time, if you're prepared for the re- Steve, at this time, if you're prepared for the revaluation 2028 update, I have a couple of matters there. I do want to interject because it is going to play a part on this revaluation. Two items to report in our personal property. Very excited to report that the number of registered motor vehicles is record-breaking for Craven County. For this fiscal year, we had 105,584 registered motor vehicles. We are $10 million.
That's more than we have people.
Well, we have more. And last year, we had 102,631. So this year, I'm reporting 105,584, and we are $10 million shy in breaking 1.7 billion in valuation for registered motor vehicles. So I'm going to, I'm going to refer back to this in my revow presentation here in just a minute. Just another side note, because we are here on the coast, the number of watercraft, particularly boats, we have for this upcoming year, 7,297 boats. That is an increase of 118 more than what we had last year.
County manager, I think that indicates that we are growing. There's 3,000 more vehicles.
Not to mention the unregistered vehicles in your neighborhood alone.
Yeah, we have some of those, too.
All right. Let's see here. I have the agenda. There's three items I want to cover for our revow 2028. If we will, we'll cover the market activity, and we'll jump right into that, Steve. Let's, let's go to that next slide here. As you've learned since our 2023 revow, I've been reporting each month, and then at times that I come to you, what is our market doing here at the local Craven County level? I would describe this slide as do not judge a book by its cover. And I'm going to refer back to several things here. You're going to, you see some percentage increases that are actually decreases in the red for the first six months of this year. These are averages. These are compared to the previous year, okay? When I see a drop of 3%, and then I see a month that we increased 10%, I, I don't have alarms going off. I don't have red flags. What I want to bring to your attention here is we do have a little bit of an increase of days on market. In our past month, we had 49. It's the least number of days on market that a property is on the, on the market before it goes under contract. We're still fine. We're still fine. I bring this, I bring this to your attention because if you think back, when we were conducting town meetings toward the end of 2022, in October, November, I was still addressing. I, I feel like every time I make a presentation, I'm having to address, but the market's turning. It's going to a downward turn. And I'm here presenting to you this morning. It is not. It is not. I want to lend something to this report as well. I do, if I had to look in my crystal ball, I expect the remaining six months to be a lot like this. We're going to have months that are going to be up. We're going to have months that may be down just a little bit because these numbers are averages. These are all the highs and the lows. It's all in one. To give you a little insight, you talk about growth, chairman. If you remember back in February, I presented to you in my report that for calendar year 2024, we had a record-breaking number of real estate sales, residential sales, that sold for more than 700,000. And we had 54, I believe it was 50, 57. We had 57 sales in all of calendar year last year that sold for more than 700,000. The year before that, in '23, was 36. We had 21 more sales over 700,000 last year. Where are we today? Just the first six months in Craven County, we have 34 residential properties that have sold for more than 700,000. So if we continue that trend, we'll be at 68, which is more than what we had last year. And I say this because that is such a big indicator as to what the market is telling Craven County. They have so much confidence in our market. These buyers have a lot of confidence in our market. They're seeing the growth. They're seeing the potential, and they're excited to invest their largest asset in Craven County. That needs to speak volumes to all of Craven County, in all the departments, in all of your decision-making, okay?
Very good.
Believe on the next slide, Steve. This is for information purposes. We have our next revaluation scheduled for 2028. We already did, just to be on track to our four-year cycle. But I wanted to let you know that we did receive another mandate from North Carolina Department of Revenue that our sales ratio has fallen below that 85%. That 85% in translation says that when a house sells on the open market for $100,000, it says that our county government assessor's office appraised value is $85,000 or less when it sells for 100. We're now at 81%. So what that is saying is that for all average, for the countywide, if the property sells for 100,000, we're, we're, we're having it appraised at 81,000. Another indicator as to the growth and the increase in the values of our properties. Okay, so we are technically under the mandate, but we are scheduled for that as well. My last slide that I have for the presentation is, has to do more with curiosity. Let's see. There are 30 counties in our state of North Carolina that are conducting countywide revaluations this year.
Listen, let's wait till we get the numbers up there because they're interesting. There we go. That's the ones.
Very, yes, you're right, Commissioner Mitchell. This is very interesting. We are scheduled for 2028. Our revow was in 2023. So what has the market been doing over the last couple of years? Not all 30 counties reported their numbers, but I appreciate those who did, and I wanted to share this with you. Remember, our percentage increase was not only 42.03%, but it was a very conservative in the 40s. Fast forward two years, this is what our state is doing. Look at how many are averaging around 55 to 60% on their average increase in their revow, and we were 42. So I think it still speaks largely to, the values are still there, the market is still increasing. Now, maybe not so much as the track of it, but you'll see that largely their last revow was in 2021, and that's when the values were really starting to take hold as to what we've been experiencing these last few years. So this is the effect of when the values really started taking off, and they had their last revow then, what's it doing four years later? And you can see they're averaging about 55%.
And ours was eight years, correct?
Ours was seven. We had a 42.03% increase over a seven-year period, okay? A couple of notes there. You see Cleveland County, they had a 55%. New Hanover, right here on the coast, of 67%. Johnston County, 70%, but they haven't had a revow since '19. And they get a lot of the spillover and after effects of Wake County. Okay, so they've, they've been busy this year for sure. At this time, I just wanted to keep you in the know and being prepared for our '28 revow. With what I've been reporting to you for the last couple of years, what I'm reporting to you nearly halfway to our revow, don't be surprised if we're at another 40-something percent increase, okay? We're already under a mandate at 81, so that tells you right there, we're already at 20% there, okay?
That's it.
Chairman, this concludes my presentation, and I just wanted to take a quick second to tell you that it is my pleasure to serve as your tax administrator. I thoroughly enjoy serving in this role. So as most of you know, if I can ever help you in any way, please don't hesitate to contact.
Appreciate the work you and your team have done. Any other comments or questions for Michelle?
Yes.
I appreciate this information. This is good information to have moving forward, and hopefully all of our leaders at the municipality level will also be able to tune in and hear your presentation so that it can aid with their future planning as well. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, all of you. Next item, number six, solid waste. Mr. Stephen Astor.
Good morning, board. Thank you for having me this morning. I have one item for your consideration this morning, and that is a land lease agreement with a parcel next to the bridge and convenience center. For over 40 years, board, Craven County has leased a portion of the land next to the bridge and convenience center to a company called Answer Quick out of Morehead City. Answer Quick currently owns the 250-foot tower that staff calls the pager tower on this parcel. Last year, unfortunately, Answer Quick's owner, author Gil, passed away, leaving his family to run the business operating as Gil Girls LLC. Gil Girls LLC has remained in good standing with the county and has a great working relationship with county and county staff. Upon recently reviewing the existing lease, it was determined that the lease would need to be renegotiated with specifically its terms. The existing lease automatically renews on July 30th, 2025, and the existing lease is $2,400 per year. The renegotiated terms with Gil Girls LLC would be $3,600 annually, and that, the new terms would be set to expire on June 30th, 2028. So the request, board, is at this time, staff is requesting the Craven County Board of Commissioners to approve the new lease with Gil Girls LLC and authorize the county manager to execute all necessary documents related to this lease agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Steve Bennett, Information Technology.
Good morning, board. In August of 2024, the Information Technology Department applied for and subsequently was awarded a $100,000 grant for the purposes of improving Craven County's cybersecurity posture. The state and local cybersecurity grant program provides federal funding to help states, local governments, and rural areas address cybersecurity risks and threats. With these grant funds, the Craven County IT Department will be implementing an enterprise-grade IT security monitoring system. This system analyzes activities from various IT systems to look for signs of cyber, cyber attacks and potential vulnerabilities. These funds will be reimbursed under the terms of the grant agreement. The board is being requested to approve the attached budget amendment for the amount of $100,000 for the purpose of approving Craven County's cybersecurity posture.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Bennett? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion? Second? Roll call, please, matter of court.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Item B.
All right. Craven County has evaluated the transition of its existing phone system to Ring Central's cloud-based communications platform. This project received approval through the county's budget process, and in accordance with the Government Accounting and Standards Board Statement Number 96 on Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangement, the county has determined that this agreement with Ring Central qualifies as SBITA. The agreement grants the county the right to access Ring Central services and devices for a special, for a specific period in exchange for payment, therefore, meeting the criteria outlined under Gatsby 96. The board will be requested to approve the attached budget amendment and the amount of $321,765 for Ring Central services and devices.
Any questions on this amendment? Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Yes.
S.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Okay, item number eight. Thank you, Steve. Appointments. You'll notice commissioners under pending, we've got the Craven County, Craven Aging Planning Board, Clean Sweep Committee, Highway 70 Corridor Committee, Planning Board, District Five, Crime Prevention Council, and Volunteer Agricultural District One and Six. Those will be coming up in the near future. Under current, the EMS Advisory Council. Brian McGuire seeks reappointment. Do I have a motion for him?
I would recommend that reappointment, please.
Okay. And are there any other nominations for that position? If not, he will be appointed by acclamation. Next is Michelle Smith seeks reappointment as an EMS provider.
I would also recommend Ms. Smith be reappointed, please.
Okay. Any other nominations? Hearing none, she will also be appointed as by acclamation. Under Fireman's Relief Board of Trustees, Daniel New seeks reappointment. He is Township Three Dover.
I nominate Mr. Dan New.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, he will be appointed by acclamation in Township Eight. Mark Dale seeks reappointment.
I nominate Mr. Dale.
Are there any other nominations for that position? Hearing none, Mr. Dale will also be reappointed. NCACC Annual Conference Voting Delegate, August 23rd. Commissioner Chad Howard is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Howard will be renominated for that position. None upcoming at this time. That completes our appointments. County attorneys, yeah, county attorney, I got it right. Mr. Eric Grady.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I have one item this morning that involves the real estate located at 817 Airport Road here in New Bern. The board may recall that in October of 2022, we acquired that property basically for airport authority purposes, with the understanding that at some point in the future, the airport would reimburse us for the cost of the property and all the closing expenses. That is in the process of occurring. I believe the airport authority approved their budget amendment last week to make that happen. Since the airport authority has not actually taken possession of the property or, or used it for its purposes, we thought it would be good for the record for this board to adopt a motion designating this property as being for airport purposes under the original operating and lease agreement from 1993, and that's the action I'm requesting of the board this morning.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for the opportunity to be here with you this morning. Just three quick updates for you. Couple weeks ago, I attended the Korswama July meeting. They began their new fiscal year. Commissioner Jones was also in attendance at that meeting. They went over their 10-year capital plan. They will be pursuing planning and engineering work for a new cell. We are getting close to filling up the current one. That will require a significant permitting process, which will take several years. Excited about that. Obviously, we like to plan ahead and be prepared in case there was a catastrophic event, which I won't even say its name here at the podium, but where we use more space than normal. We want to go ahead and be ahead of the game and be prepared for that. They also are continuing to work on their gas-to-energy program. For about the last 10 years, they've had a company out there that extracts the gas from the ground, burns it through a diesel generator, which then produces electricity back to the grid, which is bought by the power providers. There are some challenges out there at the moment. They're working through those. We hope to have that program back up and running full speed hopefully this fall. But it is a neat program, and actually is a true benefit to the landfill. Last week, I was able to attend a retirement ceremony for District Attorney Scott Thomas. I just wanted to take a moment for the record to thank Scott. He's been a pleasure. He's been a pleasure to work with as county manager, and he is DA. He's really been a county guy, and I appreciate all his time and effort in helping us. I will point out that Scott was one of the cornerstones of our original opioid team that Commissioner Mark, as chairman, put together. He was one of our chairs of that and really helped push us into some of the things that we're doing now. It's really been a good program. And lastly, for your calendars, because we're a couple months out, actually three months out, I wanted just to go ahead and make sure everybody had awareness. On October the twentieth, that's your normal day meeting. We would like to go ahead and schedule a work session with you as we have in previous years. It would occur directly after the meeting ends here in this room. We'll have several topics, including Capitol, planning team will make their big presentation. I think we're going to go ahead and try to wrap up the land use plan that day, so there'll be quite a few larger items that we'll take care of. So just for your calendar, October twentieth, probably start about ten-thirty. That's all I have unless you have things for me.
Anybody have a question or comment for the county manager?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Last item on our agenda is Commissioner Reports. Who would like to go first? Smith? No report.
No report.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No report.
Well, I could talk about one thing. Just bust my arm.
Go ahead.
I attended the North Carolina Civil Air Patrol Summer Encampment graduation this weekend. We had thirty-five units onboard Station Rockaway, Station Cherry Point, and that was two hundred and thirty-five young adults ages thirteen to eighteen. It was very exciting to spend the time with our future leaders, you know, and their families. So these cadets, they not only got to experience military life for a week, but also they took a deep dive into aerospace, fitness, and character development. We have a local squadron, NC one twenty-one. If anybody has a teen in their house, I highly recommend you look into this program.
Very good. That's exciting. Thank you. Mr. Mark.
I have a meeting coming up on the twenty-third with the Airfield Harbor, appointed a number of new members to their directors, who'll all be addressing the board on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Howard.
We had a town hall maybe about a little bit over a week ago. Chad Strong was there from Planning Department, Cadmus Capehart from DOT, Pam Hawkins from Clean Sweep and Soil and Water Collection, Patrick Baker from Beavemap Beaver Management. Was an excellent meeting. We put forty chairs out. I think we ended up with having to add maybe fifteen before it was over, so over fifty folks there. Sheriff was also there, and he did his presentation. Over two hours, and we had almost no one leave. I think one person left in that time. So usually after about ninety minutes, I start to worry. But people, people stayed, and it was a productive meeting. A lot of, a lot of things came out of that, and of course, that comes back to the county manager who's helping me with a few things. So thank you there. Leslie, I wanted to say thanks for your team being here today. Very professional, as always. I appreciate the presentation. And our Craven leadership folks, Kelly Hoff and you, thanks for coming, too. Little known fact, six years ago, we were having lunch, you know, probably once a week, right? Or almost. So enjoyed working with you, enjoyed seeing you and seeing all you guys here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Two items, Mr. Chair, both with NC MAC. We've had some changes in the leadership of the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission. I have moved up to Chair of the Base Sustainability Committee, and the new Vice Chair is a retired Marine Aviator, which is very good for eastern North Carolina. He understands eastern North Carolina military bases, marine bases, and he understands aviation since that is one of our primary industries here. So hopefully that will pay off to benefit our marine bases. And second thing is, last week, NC MAC conducted a base tour of Seymour Johnson. Good participation by NC MAC leadership and for Wayne County leadership and Goldsboro leadership. This is part of a continuing effort, number one, for NC MAC to put feet on bases and see what we're actually supposed to be looking at from my perspective to tying together Seymour Johnson, Cherry Point, New River, Lejeune, and Elizabeth City, since we've to, you can name it the aviation corridor, but you have to knit it together to be an aviation corridor. That's all, sir.
Thank you.
I have nothing to share.
I have nothing to add. Do I have a motion for?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adhere.